As I announced, now that we've turned the camera on, this is the City Council Finance Subcommittee meeting of February 13th, 2003. I'm Counselor Hagan, and Counselor Cobb is here. One member is missing, Counselor Rist. Mr. Mason from the Parks Department is here. We're gonna start just a couple of housekeeping things, and then we'll get into the things minutes from prior meetings. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as I read from you, Justin.
I'll second them.
Any further discussion? In favor? Aye. Mayor's communication?
Nothing this evening.
Public speak, is there anything the public wants to speak on that's not on the agenda? If it's on the agenda during the agenda items, you can speak. If there's something you want to speak about before the agenda item, there's agendas up here. If you're here for, seems like most of you are here for the athletic fields, that is on the agenda, so. Okay, we may switch the order a little because, as I said, Mr. Mason, the Director of Parks, has another commitment. So we're gonna go to B on the agenda first. The $27,000 to fund and design three new athletic fields in Nonna Tuck Park. Just as a little background, I sit also on the CPA committee, and originally two separate proposals were brought to the CPA, one for the baseball Little League fields and one for the soccer fields. And after some discussion, and they were brought by private entities, and after some discussion and some direction, I believe, from the mayor, it was felt that it had to come through the Park Department to make the request under the new CPA for recreation. So Mr. Mason has kind of embraced the idea, I think, and I'll let him speak for himself. And I think what we're trying to do here, and what they're trying to do with the CPA money, is actually set up a design. Before we could actually go to construction, we have to approve a design for this project. And I believe it's gonna be a design for both the Little League and the soccer.
That's correct.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Mason about maybe some of the positives of why you would, assuming we approve the design, I think we can't limit it while that's what you're looking for. I mean, I think it has to be a wider discussion, a little bit about if we do get the design, you know, what would be the benefits to the city of the new fields? Because it would be considerable money for, you know, both projects, and maybe you could talk about what, again, I know the whole purpose of the design is to come up with cost factors for the whole project, but I know it would probably be in the couple of hundred thousand dollar range.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, because this has become a public project, the CPA was requesting hard numbers for this project, and to get hard numbers would put prospective bidders at a competitive disadvantage by posting numbers in a public forum. So we decided, with the scope of the work being changed from years past, the softball, baseball area that was done, they did half of it, I think it was completed five years ago. The second half now has the concession stand located, and some drainage issues and things that needed to be, so new designs had to be done with that. And then the soccer area, installing a new field and putting irrigation in that, that section was a whole new piece from designs that were antiquated. So we figured the best way to go was get professionals involved, have them do the design work, so we can put a plan together and a bid package together that can go out and get actual hard numbers and move this project forward. As far as these projects helping the park, it'll help in several ways. It'll add to our existing footprint, which brings in traffic, you know, with the weekend vehicle fees, we anticipate increasing those fees with more traffic. We also provide coed softball, adult softball. Currently, we use the Williston Fields for half the games, and this would bring everything in-house, and that would help our program as well, maybe expand it, and they pay a fee to play in those leagues to help offset costs. You know, some of the things that we've used those costs, money's for, was to hire part-time staff that wouldn't come out of our city budget. We actually pay for a position and a half during the summertime out of our accounts from revenues received, providing, you know, services through that. So we think it'll be a win-win. It'll pretty much put us at capacity. There's not gonna be much room to do unless it's a major project hereafter, but the existing cleared spots and footprint is there to be able to get these projects done, and we definitely think it's beneficial for the park.
If I might, it also continues to follow through on a long-range plan for both of those sites, and so those sites are intended for these purposes. We haven't been able to fully implement it. This will give us the design to be able to get cost estimates, and I think that's what the CPA committee's looking for. Obviously, in order to get hard numbers, we have to go out to bid, and there wouldn't, there won't be the kind of time to go out with a bid and ask them to hold it for the time it takes for the CPA committee and City Council to act, but the consultant who's engaged in the design work should be able to give us good estimates to fund.
Okay. Just to be clear, the purpose is, are we looking at new fields or just approving existing fields?
New fields.
Okay, because I thought you said some of the soccer fields are in tough shape. And I know that certain tournaments require the field to be a certain level of, you know, condition, level-wise, grass-wise.
Yeah, adding in the irrigation will help the soccer fields and the long-term growth of it. Right now, we go, as the seasons go, we get a good spring, summer with some wet weather, you know, fields look pretty good. If it droughts, like this past year we had, yeah.
Looks like that.
It gets ugly in a hurry, and it costs a lot of money to get the fields back to where they need to be. With the amount of kids, adults, and community members that use those facilities, the high school as well, you know, it's a lot of traffic on there. Adding the irrigation, right now, we have a system where my guys have to go out with big sprinkler systems that they send a hose out, and it's on a timer, and it drags back, and then they have to go down there, recheck it, and keep moving it. So as the guys are down there moving sprinklers all day, they're unable to do other things around the park area that need to be done. As you guys know, in the summertime, it's wall-to-wall every day down there, so to have them, you know, chasing sprinklers around is just not efficient at all.
So it still sounds like what we're doing is making improvements on the soccer field.
Improvements and adding a field.
Gonna add another soccer field?
Yeah, it's gonna be an added field, improvements on the existing ones.
Are you looking at a different site to add?
It's right there. It's already cleared.
Yeah, I know, I've seen the size of the lot, that's what we got.
Yeah.
These are the current fields, I believe, the parking lot. It's this undeveloped area they're gonna make another field.
Exactly. It's clear, but it's not developed.
Okay. And then the baseball field that you were looking at was going where?
Where the current three fields are, where the original plan from 10 years ago that went out had designed to have all four done, there was one, the high school varsity girls'.
The location is just south.
Pavilion Three.
Just south of the soccer fields? Or just north of Pavilion Three?
Yeah.
Or the opposite? Or just north of the soccer fields.
This is the lot where you come in, and these two fields, I believe, are here.
Yes.
And then this third field, I don't know if their number, would be fenced in also, and then be, I believe, no fence.
That one's exactly.
On this field.
Yep, those would be the two additional, and those are cleared land as well.
And I believe dugouts eventually will go in.
This isn't back our 4th of July fireworks?
No. Now, that's all deep in the park, it's beyond the pool, and so there are probably some parking in that vicinity for 4th of July, but.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't on that property.
That's a hike.
Yeah.
John, or Mayor, the Finance Director, I just had, this came up during the CPA, and I know that, obviously, the architects done a lot of work in the city. Does that have to go out to bid, or is because it's design, you can, it's at the discretion of?
So there's a designer selection law in Massachusetts that specifies when you have to bid or to go out for RFPs for design services, and the specification is if you're building, if you're constructing a building, you have to use Chapter Seven of the general laws in order to select the designer. This is considered a public works project, a horizontal construction project. There are no bid requirements for designers, and so traditionally, we try to find the best designer for that specific project. Sometimes designers are better at certain things than other things. This is a local, this is a local designer.
And obviously, all we would be approving here would be the design and.
The cost of design.
The cost of design, and I think, and I think what, and again, this is Counselor Cobb, and this is Counselor Olga Levits that just came in. There would have to be a second appropriation before anything was ever built, and, you know, it might be, depending on the total cost, it could be something that, you know, maybe all of it could be done, maybe some of it could be done, you know, and that's, I guess, the whole purpose of the design. I mean, we'd like to do the whole thing. I mean, unless, is that, is there grant link?
Well, yeah, so we were just, we were just talking, there's no determination that's been made about what, but there are programs that, state grant programs, that will pay a portion of recreational projects. Whether this project was qualified, whether or not they'd get a grant, I mean, that's all things in the future. All of the work will have to be done according to state wage rates and all of that, you know, so we really got clear interpretation of that. This will be a public construction project. There may be a private component, as there have been private components in all of the ball fields, but that will be over and above, it's separate from the work that the city will contract.
City has.
So that might be something that happened at the end. Dugouts are a pretty common, common thing that's done by private.
The private sector would come in and.
And since, there was some of that sort of cooperation with the existing fields that are there, so. In fact, the soccer building, I think, is, was built by the association, and I think the dugouts and feds were, it was done.
Yeah.
So there's always been a cooperation between the private sector and the public sector on these fields. John kind of described how we manage the maintenance of these, because we don't have the kind of staff that's necessary, and so the leagues help with that, and it puts people in the park that are able to focus on, so that the fields are in as good a shape as they can be. Irrigation is a necessary item. We didn't have the money when we did the soccer field for that, and that was a, that was a pretty major initiative, that whole soccer complex, to get it out there. I mean, there wasn't a road, there wasn't a parking lot, there weren't fields, there were forests, and so that was a pretty big project, I mean, when it took off. And it wasn't enough money to do all that we wanted to do, but there was enough to get a good, solid field and to get them away from the fields that weren't so functional. But I think this will be an opportunity to finish it up.
John, you, I noticed a couple times out at the soccer, they have the big reels, the watering reels, I'll call them reels, I don't know if that's the proper term. Now, obviously, park people are paid to water them, is that the, so we would save at least that cost, or at least minimize it?
It would help, yeah, minimize.
Somebody still gotta turn on the sprinkler unless they're on time, I was looking.
Well, that's what, when you're talking about having to dedicate park employees to deal with moving that sprinkler every time.
That's what he said.
When you have built-in sprinklers, that it's designed to cover the entire surface, it's on a timer or a switch.
And all our fields are actually irrigated except for soccer. Yeah, all our ball fields have irrigation.
It really is about the only way to keep turf consistent.
That you.
Okay. Well, I'll actually say this is gonna wrap the discussion up on my end. I'm not adverse to all, actually okay with the design, because that gives us some hard data to actually work with. I will tell you, when the hard data comes back, that's a higher level of, so it's a litmus test for me. I'm still hold to the old tenants' statute of community preservation act, second word being preservation. There has to be some level of preservation in there, where it only my vote, though. I may be the only one on the City Council that believes that still, because the law's actually changed, and I think using city, using CPA money for this purpose is still quite legal. I just haven't evolved with that change, and so I just wanna put that out there, that that's my personal view, but I have no objection to this.
Counselor Olga Levits, you have any comments?
I think it's a great use of CPA.
Just to wrap it up, I'll give you my opinion. I've been down to the soccer a few, and a little bit more, not as much the Little League, but I know it gets a tremendous amount of use by the youth, and I think it's important, it's certainly something I'd embrace. Hearing that, would you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full City Council approval of the supplemental appropriation of $27,000 to fund the design of three new athletic fields in Nonna Park, Nonna Tuck Park, as presented tonight.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Rist, the third member of the committee, and he was unable to attend tonight's talk. What I will do now is I will, at the next City Council meeting, which is in one week, would be the 20th, I'll set a public hearing on this item, because I think we're gonna have a few public hearings, and I will set a public hearing on this matter, because the full City Council has to approve it. And so I'll set that at the February 20th meeting, and would be the 20, be the first meeting, and the first Wednesday in March would be when the, that hearing would be held, so if, you know, people want to come to that, it's certainly. Did any of you want to say anything? I mean, obviously, we approved it, you know, we certainly.
It's good to hear that. You know, you're invested in the youth of East Hampton, I think it's important. Every year that we've been a part of the soccer association, we've seen our numbers go up, and, you know, we have a lot of kids coming back, and it's a great use of the fields, and I think it shows the dedication, like as you mentioned, to the youth.
Anything on the Little League part?
Yeah, I'd echo what Mike says. You know, we're investing in facilities that they can use for a long time.
Thank you.
I can just give you a hard number. Over the last, between fall and spring of this year, 757 kids between youth and high school that use it, and that doesn't even take into account the adult leagues that play, so it's.
And I will say, I did get a couple of emails from some other folks that were sent to me before we took the decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, if you could just hang on one more second, I'll move to your second. This isn't to do with the ball fields, this is.
Yep. The commissioners have plenty to read while I'm still here, so they can read until I get down there and start that meeting. We'll see you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everybody. We're gonna move to a second item, so we can have Mr. Mason's input on that before we go, and that's the item D, $17,100 to purchase a commercial mowing machine for the Parks Department. And I'll give the floor to Mr. Mason, let me just get my, I know you sent a, some supplementary information on it.
Almost not that.
Well, hang on, I'll give it to you if you haven't. Did you get this?
Yeah.
And the back, yes, the Kubota.
Yep.
Go ahead, John.
Yes, we're looking to, as we, we talk about expanding facilities, and where we're going, you know, our current mowers, we have one that's, that's very good, top-of-the-line, you know, can handle the load. We have another John Deere that has more big backyard ability, and we need to start looking at getting machinery that can handle the size of the park, you know, which we talk about, you know, trying to reduce staff hours on certain projects, things like that. We have, the John Deere's a 36-inch deck on it, we're looking to get a 60-inch deck, zero turn. We purchased a zero turn last year for the cemetery. The efficiency, the speed, the, just the, we're very impressed with that type of machinery, and how it handles an area like that. We think moving it into the park area, getting one for the park, will, you know, be able to cut, you know, time involved. We would initiate, you go down into the park, you see other projects that we're doing, because, you know, we like the ball fields, we like the soccer fields, we like doing those things, but since I've been on board, we look at other projects. You know, we're doing, adding onto Pavilion Four with the stone patio, the stone deck, and then the walkway to the pool. We're doing Pavilion Three currently, so getting our park foreman, George, to the things that, you know, a foreman should be doing. We call it beautification of the park, and we meet monthly about what, where we want to go next, and how we can keep enhancing the park, keep improving it. We want to get, you know, maintain that family atmosphere, get families in there to picnic, you know, read a book, do whatever, but to have the facility that maintains that level. We just can't have my guys just cutting grass, they have to be efficient in their workday and to get other projects done.
So this is a machine off of a state bid, and it is heavy-duty commercial, the kind of a, the kind of a machine that can mow hours at a time without.
Teams.
And from personal experience, I went from a 48-inch tractor sort of mower, for lack of a better term, to a 54-inch zero turn, and cut my mowing time in half at home. I mow about three and a half acres. So I would, it certainly would cut their mowing time more than in half. And it does a better job, and it'll take the abuse.
Oh, go ahead, I just want a quick question.
Is the script in, you know, that's on the far back page, I just don't understand. Kubota dump from seat catcher.
Yeah, that's, that's the.
Is the grass catcher behind the operator? The lever?
Yep, I can say it's a lever.
Yes.
And you can back up to wherever you want to dump the grass and stay in the seat, release it, the hopper opens, the grass falls out, and you go back.
I don't mean this as a wise question or anything, but I know your facilities down there aren't the greatest, you know, at least the office and stuff. But we do have adequate.
Garages are a good trick.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, we do have, we do have adequate areas to store this equipment, so it doesn't, you know, deteriorate from weathering or anything.
Yeah, we keep, we keep our mowers.
The equipment you keep.
We keep all that stuff inside. We're actually, this spring, the back behind our office, so if you're exiting the park, our office, well, our office is a trailer, but the garage, and then the next building there, we're looking to clean that out completely and use that.
Storage.
Yeah, use that for storage, because we have some Kubotas and some other things that can go in there and then maintain. Because right now, the, we can get it all in there, we park the trucks in there as well, so, you know, if we had to, we can leave one of the trucks out to get our mowers in there, but we want to make use of that space and make sure it's secure and tightened, and then we'll move. So we do have adequate space for, for now, you know, and I submit it every year, but our long-term, you know, goal of having decent facilities, you know, garage area and office area is still something that, you know, we want to see that come to fruition.
And then you have, maybe it's good, this would be a good time to really give you a little primer on that request. It's not in front of you, but as you know, the office was just, just getting too wet, too much mow, not a, not a, not a good place to be, and so John's renting an office trailer right now, and if you've been down there, you've seen it. The intent is to try to build a better office, sort of a community building, and your ballpark right now is around a half a million dollars. I would say it'll probably bump to $700,000 before they finish putting it all together. And that would be located at a different spot in the park, and the equipment that's at that spot would be relocated to, to inside the park. So the proposal, if, I hate to get ahead of you on this, the proposal is to put the new office immediately on the left as you enter, as you go down Lowndes Avenue and enter into Daily Field in Nonna Tuck Park. And to move the play area, which is there now.
So there's like a ball field as you come in.
Ball field on the right, play area on the left.
High school, so before the, across from the tennis court.
Before you get to the gate, on the left is a, is a play area. That would be the area for the community building office location, and the play area would be relocated and redeveloped in the park, where there is an old play area now.
Yeah, but a, but a newer design, you know, Dakota, just not the type of playground area to inhabit inside the park.
That'll be a bit more of a major project than I, you know, that'd be some future capital plan, it won't be this year. But just to keep it on the tip of your, tip of your tongue, in case.
I'll see, Olga Levits, Jeff, I'm sorry.
If you're gonna do the play yard into the park, do you get a lot of walk-up people or do they all, do they all enter the park?
On the weekends, there's a, in the weekends, there's a fee during the summer. During the week, it's free, Monday through Friday. On the weekends, they could still park on top and walk down in, you know, if they didn't want to pay the $3 to go in, or it's, you know, it's $24 for a pass for the entire year.
It's just hard to find free entertainment for the kids.
Yeah, yeah.
There are other playgrounds throughout the city.
Yeah, yeah, there's still, and, you know, that's the thing, we look, you know, when you look at the price of entertainment, you know, for $24 for a year to have, you know, and it would be, we would make it more attractive with the type of equipment that we'd want, where people wouldn't think about paying to enjoy something, enjoying something that nice, because it definitely is, is part of our long-term goal, is to replace that playground that's inside of.
Big John?
Yeah.
John?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Just to follow up to his question, I was asking, I asked the same question, so he took most of the wind out of his sails, but I was more interested in, I figured you already thought that there would be enough space, and I'm looking at, you know, how secure is the equipment, so people can go rob parts off of it and that.
Yeah, we had a lot, all the garages locked, all our buildings locked up, so, yeah, everything's secured.
Good to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Any members of the public have a comment? Anything else, Justin?
Done.
Want to make a motion?
I agree with the information you.
Okay, I'll do it. Okay.
I just want to keep John here even longer. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the full City Council approval of the following supplemental appropriation for $17,100 to fund the acquisition of a commercial mowing machine as presented.
I'll second that. Now, this motion is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Two, zero. Again, I'll set the public hearing on this one also, John, for that same first.
First, first Wednesday?
Yeah, I'll set it at the next meeting, but the hearing will actually be the first meeting in March, so.
Sounds great. Thank you for your time, I gotta head to my next meeting.
Okay. We'll go back to the top of the agenda. $20,000 for community preservation fund for boiler replacement. I don't see anyone here from the library today, and it may, I may have been a little remiss, I had some family issues the last couple of weeks of not specifically inviting them, but I also have a few additional questions, even though I supported it on the CPA, I had some questions relative to making sure that this would fall under the, you know, capital appropriation versus maintenance of the CPA. I mean, we can't do something to maintain it, and, you know, our assistant planner was the one that said, he checked and felt that it would be a capital project versus a maintenance. And also, the, but I, I do like the fact that there's some energy savings, it would be going to gas, I think it's not a bad project, and there's also possibly some issues with the smoke and the, the age of this current stage.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you have more knowledge of the project than I do, because I, as you know.
Right, I know CPA.
I'm just a facilitator in this, in these CPA funds. Replacement of a boiler is a capital, is a capital initiative, and there's a precedent with CPA funds. We did the same thing at the Historic Society Building on Hoyop Street about five years ago. The building is on the register, and so it qualifies as historic, and I believe that these projects are pretty common, these kinds of. And I believe that these projects are pretty common, these kinds of capital improvement projects on historic buildings are pretty common in the state. I did a search, there's a state website, there's a, an association, CPA Association, for lack of a better term, and they have a listing of all the capital projects that have been funded by community, by type, you name it. And I did some searches and I found a lot of similar projects. So it seems to me that in response to your question, is it capital? Yes. And in response to can you use historic money here? It appears yes.
The, when you said it's, they said it wasn't on the National or State Register of Historic Buildings. It's on the Local Inventory of State, MACRIS?
Massachusetts.
Yeah, it's-
So it said it's in their database, therefore it could be used.
Yeah, it is. It's not-
I didn't really understand.
It's not restricted like the Town Hall, but it, but it is listed in this-
It's listed in the state-
Like significant-
Right.
...register.
Council Cavan, oh, just a little background also for you, Council Cavan, Ogilvy Levitz. I think they want to use Wilson. They had like four bids and they ranged, I think this might have been the second bid in.
Yeah, that's, that we're gonna have, that we're gonna have to have a conversation with them about because this is public money.
So it might have to be that-
It has to be spent like public money.
Correct. That was my other reason for bringing that up.
But, but we'll deal with that as they implement the project. Don't make any promises.
Right. So they, they were looking for $20,000 from CPA and they were gonna come up with a four themselves if they went to that bid because, so that's all they were gonna put in and they were hoping to get some type of rebates to, to do that.
How much were they gonna put in?
Four. But I certainly wouldn't mind putting this off to one more subcommittee meeting and inviting them down if you have more questions and also, Council, this might have a question on this. So again, I, I, I think the mayor is aligned my fears a little bit on the maintenance versus the capital, but I, I guess I'd like to know, I know they have four bids and I don't know if I am. And I can also-
I would actually, because some of the questions I have, you know, I don't know if I can square an eye and actually ask them. Because the idea here is, is this is a public-private partnership. We're gonna be saving their money in fuel. Are we gonna get any of their savings back? Of course not. And we're putting out the lion's share of the cost. And so this isn't, you know, isn't much of a partnership to me. And, you know, I wanna kinda, kinda drill into this a little bit.
I'll also provide you, they did have a little more detail of what they're gonna do and it was unfair of me not to get this to you because they were, had, they had bids came from like 21.9 to 28.9. That's why they were using more than 24. And there also is a letter from the health, health agent, their new health agent is certainly endorsing the project because there is some, it's aging wrapped asbestos. And it would say, there is a gas line there. I think they could do it. Again, I don't see that where this is a, we can't certainly put it off another meeting because the, I don't believe we're gonna get anything in this heating season.
It'll, it'll be summer before they-
By the time all this gets approved, it's not gonna be. So I just soon have them come down and give you your answers, Council Cavan. I don't know, Council Ogilvy Levitz, if you have any comments or?
I'm just glad to see we don't need oil gas.
Yes. And I guess there is a gas line there which would make it, should save them a lot. But again, I would like them to kinda detail why, why maybe this contradicts versus the other. Maybe as, as the mayor said, that we gotta tell them that it may not be their choice who they-
We'll walk them through the-
Who they get through. But definitely, as I said, I'll provide this letter to you.
Nice way to play.
Like it's true. Justin, I'll provide this letter to you, which is kind of highlights the- Right. So we'll move that to the next, the subcommittee meeting and I'll get in touch with the library, people that were at the CPA and make sure that they're here if they're interested in coming, which I'm sure they are.
You know, we all know they have an endowment and I'm wondering where that 4K is coming from. So if they ask you, you can pass that along.
Gotcha. Okay, moving on in the agenda. We'll put that one over. We did item B. Item C is $5,000 to fund the cost of high-density shelving for the use of the municipal building. This is a project that the city clerk is involved in and she requested that we move it to the next subcommittee meeting because she wasn't, she wanted to have one more talk with the, because there's been some time, I guess it's been on the capital, the capital list for a while. So she just wanted it before she came in and made her comments about why it's needed. She said she would like one more meeting. So we'll move that without objection to the next subcommittee meeting also. Just gotta make my notes so I remember what happened here. The next item is E and that's $27,000 for a computer capital expense reading through Barry Smalls' item, I think. He attaches a lot of things. I'm not 100% sure what it does, but maybe the mayor can, I like this one.
I can help a little. So you've got a bit of a narrative, I think.
Yeah.
And, and that sort of explains the idea.
The idea, right.
Want to virtualize it. And then what you have is a quote for components of that virtualization, which is where the dollars came from. We're not doing everything, you'll see one section, I think it's probably on the second or third page as an X in the quote.
Those right here.
Which is-
So these aren't gonna be done?
We're not gonna include that. I think the whole total, there was like 35,000 or 36,000, something like that. And we don't need to do that portion of it. What we, what we have right now is kind of a conventional side, sort of server network relationship. And the intent here is to virtualize the network so that, so that, first of all, it's using modern architecture because we're having more and more trouble with certain computer programs being able to work on older architecture and also stability. So those are the pieces behind it. About three years ago, we put in a pair of servers that helped us improve the way that the system duplicates the data. So we put in RAID servers, essentially servers that, that write on multiple drives at the same time. So that if you lose a drive, you've got a drive that has exactly the same information on it. So that helped a lot for, for our, for our data storage and our backup capacities. This will modernize the rest of the network. And try to answer any specific questions you might-
No, I know we put some money, we, we run it out of space.
On the small wing, yeah, so we put in these redundant drives-
That's what you're talking about.
Right. We put in these redundant drives-
I do remember that.
-increase the capacity. I think that was like three or four years ago, if I recall.
It might have been my first field, probably three years ago.
And so that piece is still okay.
That's okay.
But there were, there were network, those didn't deal with the network domain. Those dealt with specific data. I'm not sure if KBS was, KBS might have been involved in one of those servers. But this is, this is domain control. So this is a little different purpose for a server. And I, and I didn't realize that you hadn't invited Barry. I'm sure you would have been happy to come if you wanted to.
No, I realize that again, it's a-
No, that's fine. And again, there's no, this isn't critical. If you, if you think that it would be beneficial to ask, ask him to come, that's perfectly acceptable to all of us.
I'd like to, actually, I'll, I'll give you my opinion there. Looking at, I mean, these items are clearly backed up. I can see where they're backed up. From here down, I can't see where they're backed up. You know, he didn't, he didn't pull them out of his hat, I know that. It's not here, you know, on the cross-out sheet.
I think it's at the end. Project management.
Project, uh, so, I'm-
Feel free to-
What I really want to do is just send him an email and-
Further explanation, Adam?
You know, again, we can put this over the next meeting because we're gonna have plenty to deal with it. Council Ogilvy Levitz?
Generally, he buries me with information on it.
Just want to get you another five to seven years? That's the nature of the business.
That ain't bad.
That's pretty good. Like, give me five to seven months, like everyone else. Am I buying a computer at all?
Okay, we'll put this over to the next meeting and have Barry come in.
I will.
And you can have your questions. Maybe you can email them to Barry and I will email Barry my questions. And then we can move it if the mayor says it's not something that is critical. And item F is the purchase of two new police vehicles.
And I did have a chance to visit briefly with Chief McMahon today. He's, he's doing much better.
I did see him in the-
Won't be here tonight.
No, I, I did talk to him since the last meeting. I guess my only question with this and, and maybe we can, again, maybe move this one over to, and I know this is kind of a little bit of a departure from what we went to, going from the Crown Vix to these SUVs.
Right. So Crown Vix are gone. They, they don't want, they stopped making them in 11, I think. And so they had a lot of them and they finally sold out. And so they, they use a new chassis and they make it in two versions. They make it in a sedan version and they make it in a, in something that looks like a, like a, like a slightly smaller Explorer, bigger than their Escape, but smaller than their Explorer series.
Who was just on the news that it happened?
So Northampton, you just recently read about-
Two or four?
Three, three, that were acquired in Northampton. So the chief has seen these vehicles, they've been in them. The visibility in the sedan is not acceptable. It's, it's a sort of a Taurus shape. And so there's, you can't see, you know, high, high side walls, tiny windows in the back, very poor visibility. So they're not happy with that, with that chassis and that body. And so the only alternative, unless they go to the Dodge, which they don't like because it's the Charger, that Charger, the modified Charger.
That actually has the same kind of-
It's the same problem as the sedan, is this. The advantage to what they're proposing is that they're buying it for the same price that we paid for the Vix. It's all-wheel drive. It's, gets better gas mileage because it's got a six in it, not an eight. And we'll see about their longevity because they're new. Everybody's, everybody's new with them. State Police had them first. Chief McMahon indicated that when Sergeant Ross was doing the research, State Police said that this was a much better vehicle than the sedan for the kinds of purposes that a local department would use. And I tell you, we can always use all the drive. And I, I drive one and it's-
Especially this last week.
Yeah. You know, Crown Vix are not, not good for cars.
We learned how to drive it twice.
And so they, the request is for less than the total. The totals that you got were, with some options that we're not gonna acquire. And we're gonna reuse the radar, we're probably not gonna get a few of the options that are listed on the MHQ list. So the chief said to go in for the 78, which is the same appropriation we requested for the last double cruiser.
Two?
$39,000 apiece. Last time we pulled the appropriated money for one, it was $35,000.
Do, we've been on the two cruisers for a while. Is that-
Well, no, no.
Is it two one or two?
Right. So we normally are on a two-one-two rotation. We missed the last deuce rotation. So it was two-one-one. And now we're back to two. We ought to be at three. He's got three cars that he'd like to replace. We just don't have that kind of funding. And we'll see if we ever catch up, but.
Again, I'll ask the question, you know, it seems like this is a priority for you, but the, you know, again, free cash is getting slim. I mean, is, is there, if we went to one, you think we'd just drop further? I mean, I don't know, I know they forgot a lot of miles on them. Usually the chief, when he comes in, has like the, he's very-
The cars that, the cars that he wants to trade are cars that have been prone to issues. And he's afraid if we keep them for another cycle, that's another 30,000 or 35,000 miles that will end up doing transmission work. And so we'll, we'll likely drop several thousand dollars into, into the cars. So he's really urging, you know, we started with three and it wasn't happening. We can't do three.
Council Ogilvy Levitz, you-
You said like the six cylinders?
Yeah.
How's that compared with the Renault and?
Yeah, they're happy, they're happy with acceleration. State Police use them. They, they like them. We don't do much, to be honest, in the way of high-speed chasing. Radios go way faster than cars. And so they'll, they'll usually, the way, the way that our folks react is they'll usually, since we generally have three vehicles roving, they'll usually figure out a way to get another vehicle ahead of whoever they might want to reach out to so that they sort of follow them into a stop. That's kind of their style. They're, they do it fairly well. And so they're, they're happy with how fast they'll go and they'll-
It's a cylinder, you need some power sometimes to go.
But they, the, the other part of that is there are no eight cylinders available. They, they don't make the conventional large sedan, eight-cylinder sedan anymore for this purpose. You can buy eight-cylinder sedans, but they're not made for police. And so they won't hold up.
This is the, the state bid.
This is the state bid. MHQ is the state.
Do you, just one, kind of align with your, still having a lot of former colleagues in the business. The only thing that any of them said that have driven this is said that in conering, it's not as stable as the Crown Vic because it's obviously a little more top-heavy. But, so again, that would reduce the chase. But again, if anything, I, you know, we have very narrow streets in East Hampton. I think we got, you know, we, you know.
They do let in the traffic a lot, actually.
Slowing, slowing them down won't be, I don't think, the worst thing. I'll just throw that out for a bit. Again, that's just word of what some people have said, you know, they, you know, whether that's true or not, I've never driven one, so.
Yeah, I haven't either. We actually, we had, we had attempted to put a demo together and weren't successful. And then the chief had his injury and it got sort of, by the wayside. They were happy to hear the reports from Northampton. When Northampton got their delivery and started using them. So there's a good response from that department. And as I said, we don't have a lot of choices here. You know, we can't go back to what we had. They don't make it. They, they've long since not wanted the Dodge option for lots of reasons. And so we're, we are, we are going to have to stay with Ford. And given the two vehicles, they're, I didn't get, I didn't ask them to give me pricing on the sedan, but the chief indicated that the pricing was very close. And so he didn't think that there was enough of a financial difference to negate the need for all the trucks.
I mean, I don't have a problem with this one, Justin, but if you want more time, certainly I'll pull along with it.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna extend a haul of the file to the Northampton Police Department. Try to get a look at the vehicle because what I remember is, is also the way we package our prisoners.
Size of the rear seat.
How, how we actually do that. I'm gonna have to look at one of these vehicles before I actually-
Okay, so we'll move this over to the next.
I will be ready to vote on this at the-
The next meeting.
Which will still get us into the, by the end of March, the chief.
Okay.
I was hoping to get you guys to have less hearings, but.
I know. Well, we got a, this, the continuing business, we have $100,000 to fund the expected shortfall in the police budget. This is one that I believe we approved, but we didn't set a public hearing because we knew there were gonna be some other appropriations. So certainly if you want, do you have that one with you, Justin?
Yeah, I do right here.
I think that's the one you want to consolidate for this other stuff you're putting on.
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was my suggestion, but if you're, you're already scheduling, you already have the schedule, the $27,000 and the 17, well, you might as well put the 100 on it. I mean-
Yes, because we have to set those and then we'll have the three for the next, or unless there's more coming.
There's more coming.
I hear you. So, so if there's no further discussion on that, we'll put that one and I'll set that one for a public hearing. So that'll give us three public hearings. We'll do the 100,000.
17.
The 17 for the mowing machine and the-
27.
27 for the Nonna Park design. And we'll, that'll leave us to bring the other CPA and the boiler back. Barbara's request, which she wanted put over. And again, by then, hopefully you'll have all your answers on the police, police vehicle. We can do that. And you, and we'll bring Barry in. You'll be getting like-
Do you want- Seven public works requests at the next meeting.
So it'll be another couple. That's better. Do you want me to ask somebody from, if the chief can't come, one of the other officers to come? Or again, it's up to you, Justin. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, so.
I can, I'll follow up too, is if, whether it's you Mike or whether it's someone from the force, if I have any specific questions, I can detail them in an email and they can either answer me or bring it, or someone can come here and answer them, which is what I personally would-
Yeah, if you, if you give me your questions, I'll get them answered. And if you want someone here, I'll get someone here. That's, you know, that, they just need to be asked, that's right.
No, absolutely.
And I didn't.
No, no, that's fine.
The questions are, are, are kind of minor, but it's, once I get a look at the vehicle, I'll, I'll see.
As I said, if, as I said, if you, you know, obviously if you can get the questions to mayor, then certainly, I know the police would send- to Mayor, then certainly, I know the police would send somebody in, whether it's, I know Sergeant Kelly was sort of in charge there, I don't know if he's still... Okay, I think we've completed everything on our agenda.
I will say this, it's not about getting two versus getting one, because I'm a big believer of trying to stay in this cycle.
Before we close the meeting, Counsel Ogilvy, any other comments?
How is the free cash going?
This was a while ago. The finance director will probably tell you, I believe there's, I don't have it in front of me, but there's like a middle line that was what we've already kind of appropriating, and then the ones that are kind of up for review now are in that last line.
Last one.
Right, so if everything gets approved...
We'll spend it all before it's over.
We still have stabilization money of close to like nine-hundred something, is that right?
Yeah, it's about a million now, yeah.
They get a million too.
So how do we normally finish off if we've already had the balance? Well, yeah, there's a residual balance, but it's generally not very significant. I think last year we might have left sixty or seventy thousand dollars on the table.
And who do you normally start with?
You don't start, you don't start, free cash is the residual profit from operations. And it can go negative, so it can be a loss. So to use, to use something that's similar...
Starting next year, yeah.
You don't start with, you start with zero. You start with maybe you can...
Yeah, well, as soon as the year ends, free cash becomes unavailable. So even if you had a million left in free cash that you didn't spend, it would just be totally unavailable until the fiscal year closed and was approved, and then it's available again. So if you let it roll over, in a sense, if you don't spend every penny that was approved, then it sort of sits there and becomes part of what is certified in the next year.
There's a period of time we can't really access that money.
And that's basically between the time that the year ends and the time that free cash is approved, which is generally four to five months, yeah.
And so from July to, from Ju-, Ju-, I'm sorry, July one to free cash certification, if there was any leftover, you can't, it's like it goes into a lockbox and can't be used. You can't appropriate it for anything, you can't, you can't, I can't do anything, it doesn't exist. Once you start the year, you know, you can use it, and we have in the past, you can take some of it and apply it to the budget that starts July one, but that's an appropriation that happens in April or May. So it's not, it's not, you know, in private sector, you think your profit was in your pocket, and on July one, you still got your profit in your pocket, but that's not how the public sector works.
Spend it when you got it.
No, well, either spend it or set it aside. So what we have done in most years is we've taken a third of free cash and put it into stabilization. In the last two budgets, we haven't had to use, I can't remember twelve...
We did use in last year, the year before, I think.
Right, so in twelve and thirteen, we haven't used any stabilization reserves. We fed reserves back in in twelve to bring it back up to a million dollars. And it was a deliberate decision to do capital, because last year we did very little capital. And the year before, we did like a hundred, that was in the FY twelve budget, no, the FY twelve budget, we did a hundred and twenty thousand in capital, that's all we had available. And so we skipped a cruiser, we didn't buy, you know, we didn't buy many things that we needed, and they're kind of hanging on. So that was deliberate, from the point of view that we needed free cash to be able to plug a budget gap and to be able to return money to the stabilization reserve, which is like our long-term savings account. And it's tied up, because it takes two-thirds of the city council to release it. So it's not easy to spend. We do carry a budget reserve, and so every year, when the city council gets the budget, in section nine of the budget is something called a reserve fund. So that's a budgeted reserve. That comes from whatever estimated receipts we're going to use. Some of those estimated receipts could be free cash. So right now, I haven't run my own totals, Melissa's got the ones that are kind of visible. There's what, about three hundred thousand dollars worth of free cash, something two hundred, I think it was two-hundred-and-sothing thousand.
Look, if we approve everything that's in front of us, there's two-seventy-one left in free cash, there's four-eighty-seven left in retained earnings, and then the reserves are already down to forty-one, and then about ten thousand in the enterprises.
So you're going to get, at the next city council meeting, some further spending of both the reserve fund, and then we're going to be asking you for spending for the retained earnings. And that'll further reduce the available free cash and retained earnings. And off the top of my head, we're down after that to about a hundred and fifty thousand in free cash. And that'll sit for a little while until we figure out what the budget's doing. There are, there's a potential hole in the chapter thirty-two B budget. We need to maybe get through the, into the month of March and take a look at budgets to see if there are any further shortages. Because we don't have a lot of money in, you know, I think we started the reserve fund, the budgeted reserve, with ninety grand.
Right, and also like last year, when we had to do, come in for overtime, that, when we had come in for overtime, that means we need to come in for Medicare tax, because we match fifty percent of that. So if we're spending more than we budgeted for, then we didn't budget enough in tax, in employment taxes. So every time that we ask for payroll increases, the increases in the payroll taxes go up.
One and three-quarter percent, one-point-seven-five or one-point-two?
One-point-four-five.
One-point-four-five. So that two-hundred thousand dollars that we're going to spend in wages are going to have an impact on our Medicare.
And that's why usually at the end of the year, we'll always see those supplements for...
How about this past weekend with the storm? Well, storms, so right now, by the way, you guys see what you had assigned?
Yeah, we signed it. We put them in...
So right now, we're, the city council at last meeting, last meeting, vote of the snow emergency, that's deficit spending. So what you'll see in the budget, when it's submitted to you in April, is you'll see in the, in the income section of the budget, a negative or a charge to receipts for whatever we excess spent. That's the way, that's the way the snow emergency works. So there's two ways to deal with it. We could say, gosh, I don't want to carry it as a snow emergency, Chickaby does this. We're going to throw another three hundred thousand dollars as an appropriation into snow. So we could take our free cash, instead of, instead of buying the capital that we need, we could simply put it into the snow budget and use it to pay the plows, as opposed to buy the cruisers or whatever else we're doing. We don't do that.
All I can say is that when I left East Hampton Sunday morning...
Wasn't it different?
To go to Connecticut, and make that in Connecticut all week, these guys did a long temper job. The Union Street would be better shape than ninety-one.
Yeah, our public works, our public works staff does a great job. You know, it's sometimes difficult, we had, we had lots of people complaining, but you're right, if you look at the condition of the streets, when you compare them to elsewhere, they did a great job. Last year, we were pretty lucky, we had a light winter with the exception of that nasty October storm. And our deficit spending for snow was in the vicinity of seventy thousand dollars.
Hundred.
Generally, it's two to three hundred. And that comes right off the top of the next year's budget, and so it's a double-edged sword to do what we do. If we appropriate more, then we have to match that appropriation in the beginning. So if we, if we decide that we're going to budget three hundred thousand, we are forever locked into budgeting three hundred thousand, because you can't declare an emergency if you've appropriated less than you appropriated the year before. So you have to live with that law. And we honestly don't appropriate enough money for snow. I don't know that we ever will, except those odd winters when we don't have much snow. This is going to be probably an expensive year, but it's really going to depend on how much more snow we get. You know, we had a pretty open year, so we declared a snow emergency later in the year than we normally do. And you've seen, we haven't had the kind of invoices that we would normally see when we have a long cycle of snow. This storm will be expensive.
The storm, I noticed some, we rent extra equipment, like having to move certain things?
Yeah.
And do we have like something with companies up front, like they know where it might come, or you just have to go out?
Depends on what, depends on what we're using. So plows and trucks to haul snow, we bid all that ahead of time. What you're thinking of, I think, is the, we use...
I think there was like a big box.
We used, yeah, we rented three Bobcats with snow blowers and operators from a local construction company. That went out as a thirty-B acquisition, three price quotes, and we're not going to spend more than the acquisition will allow us. They were necessary because you couldn't push the snow back, but we had to make the roads wide enough. And so as you saw, they went down along the curb line and snowblowed into the people's lawns right at the curb, where they could. Now, we did a lot of it along Hoyoke Street, we did a lot of long runs like West Street, Glendale, in some of the side streets. We couldn't use them in New City, because there isn't any place on the edge of the road to blow the snow. The yards are small, you know, there's the street, there's the sidewalk, there's a fence, there's five feet and a house. This is, so we have, we have to pick up those streets conventionally. But these blowers still did a great job. Now, we have in the past used, the city owns a loader-mounted snow blower that we use to load trucks when we clean up downtown, that sort of thing. We have in the past used that vehicle to widen roads. But in this instance, because of the level of work needed, there was no way we were going to be able to widen roads, clean up downtown, and do it in any kind of a timeframe that made any sense. I suspect that what you'll see is that we're not going to do very much more cleanup until it gets, until we get a cold snap again. We'll do daytime cleanup, we're not going to do much nighttime, because the snow is melting pretty quickly with this February sun. And we get some three, four days of February sun, and most of these windrows that are still along the curb will go away. And it's much cheaper to let the sun get rid of them.
I will say this, I heard nothing but praise about the rental of the snow blowers for widening streets. I had people calling up, saying, I don't know what you, what you did, but it was just remarkable for, so it's a technique we use that costs us money, but it was something that the citizens really liked, like a lot of...
Well, it was necessary. I mean, the thing is, the streets need to be passable in two ways, and there was just too much snow here for them to be. And we, you know, you didn't have, you don't really have a choice. A lot of what highway, I don't want to, I don't want to take anything away from highway, but a lot of the decisions that we make when we decide what to do with the streets are driven in part by the need to be able to respond with our own emergency vehicles. And so you need to be able to do that. And the other part of it is that folks get irritated when they can't get two-way passage on a two-way street. And so it worked out. Joe Kipchinsky, the DPW director, continues to do a really good job. Jim Keats, the highway supervisor, is kind of in charge of the boots-on-the-ground stuff, been doing a good job with it. And PD, although the chief isn't there to ram ride directly, you know, they've been doing a good job with coordinating dispatch. You know, I can't say enough about the response to the storm. I mean, we, we really did staff up to respond in the fire and dispatch areas, and we filled all the shifts in police. But the governor's declaration of a state of emergency and the, I'll say, request to not drive on the streets, or the order to not drive on the streets, really worked.
Yeah, I saw that.
People didn't drive, and that made life easier. If you look at our log for this particular storm, it's quiet, because folks stayed in. They said, jeez, you know, this is going to be a pretty nasty storm. Could we do some of what we did better? Sure, but that's, you know, you learn those types of things.
I will say this, Chet, it took me a couple of years to wrap my head around how we budget snow, because it's not the way you, you know, you would budget snow removal in your own house. It's a different, different way of wrapping your head around, you know, how you do it. I haven't had to be convinced after that though.
And so in order to facilitate paying bills, the city council voted that two, that a majority of their finance committee has the authority to approve snow emergency purchasing and expenditures. And so there's a packet every time they come in, that's sitting in their box, waiting for signature. This one, I think I had already signed it, so you guys got to sign it last. If they get it first, then it comes to me. And so it required, anytime we write a PO or spend any money for snow emergency, it requires city council authority as well as the mayor's. When it's just the regular budget, it's just the mayor's authority. So it's a kind of a checks and balance from perspective that, you know, you look, you see what we're buying, you can determine whether or not you think it's, you know, you think it's not unrelated or unnecessary purchase, and it's a PO, you can challenge it.
Like if the mayor bought a motorcycle, then it's no...
Hmm! A sidecar! But that works out very well.
Or if we see something way out, way out of line or numbers that don't add up, we usually question. I will say this, that when I first started on finance, the packet we get now from Patty Cotton is actually so unorganized, it's very easy to follow and meet at this point. When we first started, it was very unorganized compared to where we are today. We've made improvements over the years, we've refined this process.
I appreciate the insight, Mayor. And any other questions before we adjourn? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.